It is 5:00 on Monday, March 17, 2025. This is a meeting, regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape Girardeau. We welcome everyone for being here. As always, we will begin with an invocation tonight by the Reverend Geneva Allen Patterson of St. James AME Church here in Cape Girardeau, and then follow that with our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would all, please rise and join us.
We can bow our heads, let us pray. Loving God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have made, and may we rejoice in this St. Patrick's Day. We thank you that we can witness yet another Women's History Month, and we thank you for our Mayor Kinder and for other community women, all of these history makers. We thank you for them, Lord. As we call to order another city council meeting, we definitely ask for your guidance, Lord, and for your wisdom. May our discussions and the decisions be made with respect, Lord, with understanding, and with a genuine desire that we serve the citizens of our community. Lord, as we have experienced 19 tornadoes in our state, we're seeking your grace and your comfort for all of these communities that are grieving, that are injured, Lord. We lift up those who are experiencing pain, dear Lord, and those who are experiencing loss at this time, and we're asking for your healing touch and that you would give them not only physical peace but emotional, spiritual peace at this time. We lift up and pray your hand, Lord, and the selection of our Ward Five representative to the city council that will be decided on April 8. We also pray for the appointment to the golf course advisory board tonight. We pray your blessings upon all the people that we serve in this community. We pray this in your name, and we all say it. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. We don't have anything for our study sessions or presentations tonight. Counsel, any communications or reports?
I just want to toss out there a big thank you to all city staff for everything that happened over this past weekend with the tumultuous weather on Friday that Reverend Allison Patterson mentioned in her prayer. It was, that was a dicey moment for all of Southeast Missouri and all of, pretty much the entire state, and so I really thank the City of Cape Girardeau staff that made sure that they were up and ready to go and ready and willing to serve and help citizens because it really got, got rough there. So thanks to all the city staff for doing that, and I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank our, you know, it's nice that we have a TV station in this town that has meteorologists that are broadcasting, and it's, it's wonderful that we've got those people giving us that minute-to-minute detail, and I think after the third or fourth hour of live broadcasting, it gets a little rough, so, so thanks to all of the folks that were out there, you know, being first responders and presenting that weather information to keep citizens safe, as the safety of everybody is the most important thing. So, that's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, he stole my thunder there, Dan. I just wanted to echo his comments. My wife, we stayed up probably till about 1:00 watching all that, just because they were talking about 4:00 and 5:00 touching down, and they were to the north, they were, they were just to the east and west of us, even though we did lose some power, and thankfully we, we bought that generator a couple of years ago and it kicked on. But sometimes, you know, those weather, they come in and it's in the middle of your show, and you get frustrated, but without them, I, I think more damage and more lives could be lost or injured. So thank you, KFVS, thank you, Grant, and all your whole crew for, for what you do. It's, it's very important, and we're lucky to have you. And, and if we wanted to adjourn early, we could finally finish this at KDOs, because there's about 60 people standing outside, ready to get with it. I guess not.
We have a little business to get through, but then, you know, should be quick. Anyone else, counsel? Okay, moving on then, onto items for discussion. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to appear as an advisory board applicant? Yes, sir.
My name's Tim Kelly, and I live at 1937 Suen Trail. I'm here to introduce myself. Tracy Weismuller said we had the option to do that, so some people, I don't know hardly any of you, so I thought I'd come. Let's see, a little about me, my senior year in high school, I earned a baseball scholarship and went to Mineral Area Junior College on a scholarship. I met my future wife there. We've been married now 50 years. She's a retired school teacher here in Cape Girardeau, taught at Jefferson Elementary School all 30 years. I have two children, three grandchildren, and so, a little bit more about me. I worked a few different jobs before finally getting my insurance license and selling insurance here in Cape Girardeau. I worked myself up to finally owning my own independent insurance agency in Cape called Capital Insurance. I sold my agency later to two employees of Capital, and that was some 14 years ago. I've been playing golf for about 50 years. I belonged to Cape Girardeau Country Club 35 of those years. My last two years at the club, I was elected to their board, and the last year, I was president of the board. I was going to have knee replacement and cancer surgery the following year, which I think was like 2015 or something like that, so I dropped out of the country club, not knowing if I'd be able to play golf ever again. And as it turned out, I healed up from all my surgeries, and I started playing golf, and when I did, I started playing at JC's, and I've been there ever since, about 10 years or so. That is why I'd like your consideration to be appointed to JC Golf Course Advisory Board with my past experiences and love for golf. Maybe I'd help round out the board, so if there's good or not, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for appearing before us tonight. Yes.
Hello, my name's Don Harris, 1616 Mississippi. I was born here in Cape Girardeau, where old St. Francis Hospital in 1956. I would like to be considered for the Historical Preservation Commission. I have two degrees from CMO, one is a bachelor's in social studies, I have a master's in history. I currently am a history instructor at Mineral Area College Extension Center here in Cape. I taught in the Cape Girardeau School System for eight years. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Glen House, and I've been so since 2013, so I would like to be considered for this position. Lifelong love of history and the history of, of this great city, and I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to appear? No? Okay. Next, we will have the Planning and Zoning Commission Report. Mr. Blank.
I feel like I need to reintroduce myself, it's been so long.
Yeah.
Hope everybody's well, and try to get through this so Mr. Cantrell can participate in other activities.
Head, head down the block.
We only had, we only had three properties. First of these at 126 Dogwood Street. Zoning upon annexation was recommended, zoning District R1, and this was five in favor, zero in opposition for that one. Second of these was 524 and 546 North Silver Springs Road. This property is vacant property right in front of the laundromat and that area of Silver Springs that's up near the apartments in that area, that strip center there. Rezoning from R4 to neighborhood commercial, and what I understand with this is the developers wanting to do main-level commercial with residential right above those. Recommendation was four in favor, zero in opposite, opposition with one abstention. And lastly, we had 1918 North Kings Highway, which is the former Golden Eagle Motel, and if you recall, that property went from the motel to commercial spaces, and the owners wanting to take the second level of that building and convert that back into residential, leave the main-level commercial, and take the basement and turn it into residential. Rezoning from C2 to neighborhood commercial, recommended five in favor, zero in opposition to this. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Blank, appreciate it. And we will next have our consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mary. Counsel, we added six. I guess, you know, the mayor wanted to go through over the capital improvement plan, so we'll remove that one. Basically, six is to execute an LMI agreement with CMO Capital Group for certain improvements along 716 through 718 Broadway. That for now concludes the consent review.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Haskin. We will now move into regular session, beginning with the call to order and the roll call vote. Ms. Weismuller.
Mr. Bliss.
Here.
Mr. Cantrell.
Here.
Mr. Essex.
Mayor Kinder.
Here.
Mr. Presson.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
All right, thank you. Counsel, we have an agenda before us, as Dr. Haskin mentioned, I would move that we remove Bill 2529 from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve that amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor then of the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries, the agenda carries. We have one public hearing tonight. That is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 through 2030 Capital Improvement Program. I will now open that public hearing, if anyone wishes to speak to that, may do so now, and it will also be, counsel will also take it up after the consent agenda, as we just discussed. Anyone wishing to speak on that public hearing? No? Okay, hearing none, then I will close that public hearing. We have the consent agenda before us. Mr. Young, if you would, please read that.
Bill 2527, an ordinance approving the record plat of Webster Sprig subdivision. Bill 2527, an ordinance approving the record plat of Webster Sprig subdivision. Bill 2528, an ordinance approving the record plat of Young House Meadow subdivision. Bill 2528, an ordinance approving the record plat of Young House Meadow Brook subdivision. Bill 2530, a resolution authorizing the city manager direct to your license indemnity agreement with CMO Cardinal Group LLC to place certain improvements at 716, 718 Broadway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
All right, thank you. Counsel, we have the consent agenda before us, as stated, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor then of that consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We had one item removed from the consent agenda, that is Bill 2529, a resolution adopting the 2025-2030 Capital Improvements Program in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This is for the reading and passage. I just had spoken to Dr. Haskin earlier, you know, this is a, not a, not one of the heftiest documents we have to, have to go through and discuss, but I thought there was some really, you know, just a lot of interesting information, a few questions I had. Ms. Mills, if, I think you're probably the, you've been tapped to, to cover those, so thank you for, for being here. Really, just wanted to clarify to the public, you know, that this is a, this is a document that, that is put together, of course, by the administration and the, the various departments within the city, and some of it's projected, some of it's more firm. Was going to ask if you could just give us a, just an overall description of, of what this is, and how it's put together.
Certainly. So we do this every year. It's the Capital Improvement Program. It's a planning document that helps us look at the next fiscal year, the one we're budgeting for now, plus out into future years. The first five years, we're fairly attentive to the projects that we'd like to accomplish and the funding sources that are available for those. The second five-year term out there is a projection, and a want list of things that if we can get funding for them, we'll do them, and then there is a degree of contingencies that are so far out there, past the 10-year mark, won't be done unless there is funding or we choose during our planning process every year to move those up into the 10 fiscal years that we look at. It's, the agenda report details out some of the dollars that are in here. Basically, there's $220 million, $221 million worth of projects that we're looking at here. Of that, $84 million of it is funded with a resource we've tagged or think relatively certain we can fund it with. Another $136 million is not. So we look at this and break it down between what we call recurring and grant revenue projects, and that's typically by department, and then we look at those tax initiative projects that we have tax initiatives out there, and there is a revenue stream because of the tax revenues, and we have those put together annually in periods.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, on the first page, the thing that struck me was that $220 million versus the, the $136 million unfunded.
Yep, and that's not an, I mean, that's, we always look and compare the prior year to this year as we go through the process. That's a normal range, quarter of a million, and, you know, we're looking at, or that $220 million, we're looking at that, and then we have to determine how we're going to fund it.
Right, yeah.
And it's a plan, and, and it's a projection. If we don't put it out there and plan for it in those five-year increments, then it'll just get lost in the, so it's there. All the departments participate, all the departments come in with their individual requests and things that we need to do. It's all contingent based on what funding is, Kate, is available. One thing that we did or have improved, as we've, we've done this, is those things that we have specific items that we've identified funding for, we try to make sure it's not a projected cost but more of a realistic cost and one that we know there's a funding source for.
You know, I think the thing that struck me the most when looking at, at the document was really the last two pages, the completed projects, and I think that would be important for, if, you know, for citizens to take a look at, you know, to see what, you know, what we've gotten for, from, from the work for the, the, the city staff, and Lisa and her department have done to complete these various projects. I mean, it's, there's a lot of really great things here, things that have really had a big impact on our community, so I think it would be really important for, you know, people to take a look at that.
So I will say the 2425 project cost of what we're going to complete is a projection because the 25-year isn't over yet, but we have a fairly good idea
Sure.
of what we are going to be able to complete this year, and that is it. And so you'll notice on there, I think the total is what, 19 million?
19, 19 and some change.
Yeah.
19.5.
19.5.
So when you look and you think about what we've done, that's what we completed or we were projecting to complete, and when you look at our projections for the next five years, the 2627 is 21 million, 2728 is 23 million, all within those parameters of what we've been able to do. I will say the 256, 2526 projections are pretty large. We're projecting 36 million in completions, but that's because we're trying to finish off the last of the TTF funds before we move into that new tax issue.
You know, I noticed the, what, what stuck out to me, because we've, we've been talking about this in terms of legislative priorities and, and trying to get it on the radar of our, of our state folks, is the, the needs at the airport.
Yes.
The, the fuel farm and especially the, the air traffic control tower. I mean, those, those seem like essential needs for that, for that facility.
And they are clearly in the contingent column because there is not a funding source for those.
Right, right, which is.
Yeah, the tower is, is, there's not a, it's unfunded, and it's in the contingent column.
Right, right, I thought. And then, obviously, the, the, the needs in the water system.
Yes.
I was just hoping you could
Certainly.
kind of explain, you know, I just noticed off the bat, they weren't under the, the Public Works Department needs, just if you could have just kind of explained the
So the reason they're in capital improvement sales taxes is because currently that's the only funding source we have for them. CIST taxes is, is what we have that we can use, and that has been the resource that we've tapped on to do the projected planned improvements that we have planned already. This, this chart really mirrors what we projected in the water study
Right.
and in everything we put out there to the taxpayers for the recent election we had regarding the tax. So this, this, this capital improvement plan is the same as that was in the water, it's just a redo, it's a mirror of what we had in there, and you can tell, it totals out, there's a, there's also other projects that capital improvement sales tax fund, funds, and that's included here, but the majority of this is the improvements to the water treatment plant, and we're sitting on $106 million, and 92 million of that is unfunded, that's 86% of these projects that are detailed here, not funded. You also notice that there's not a lot of contingencies. The only contingent amount is that which exceeds 10-year plan, exceeded the 10-year plan in the total project we were looking at for the water treatment facility.
Yeah, and I think it's just important, when you're looking at this chart, to, to recognize that a lot of those essential components that are needed are unfunded. They're not going to be, which is, goes back to the entire water rate
It does.
initiative that we, that we discussed last fall.
There's $17 million of projects in fiscal year 2728, that's just two years out, and 16.4 of that is not funded.
You know, when you look at the, on the public safety side, and when you see in 2627, the unfunded for these engines and the ladders and the trucks that are going to come due to their expiration, I think it's very important that we rerun that public safety tax as well. I, I hope people take a look at this, which is on the site, so they can see what's coming to, and it's just like letting your own vehicle fall apart and not do the due diligence and maintenance on it, and that's what we're going to run into with a looks like about four or five different trucks.
The Public Safety Trust expires the current tax that's being assessed right now, expires in December of 2035, and yes, it is a source for the apparatus replacement, and these trucks that you're looking at, the $5 million, there's a ladder engine, a ladder truck, and one, two, three, four engines. It's a large expenditure, and it's on the CIP because we have to start planning for that now.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay. Ms. Mills, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so counsel, we have Bill 2529. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then, all in favor of Bill 2529, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We do not have any new ordinances tonight. We have one appointment to make to the Golf Course Advisory Board. Do we have more? More votes to tally there? And the council has voted in Mr. Timothy Kelly for that position. Congratulations to you, Mr. Kelly.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. Is there a motion then to approve, Mr. Kelly?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor then of approving Mr. Kelly for the Golf Course Advisory Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. You, you are now officially in. Thank you, Nate, I sometimes forget the, the, all the advisory, or the appropriate motions there. We have one item under other business tonight, and that is to set a special city council meeting to declare the results of the April 8, 2025 municipal election. I would like to move that we create a Zoom meeting. that we create a Zoom meeting at 12:00 PM on April 14. This is, this is always several minutes long, total. So is there, I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion about that idea?
Worked for me.
Okay. It should take five minutes, really. Okay. All in favor, then, of that, that, those details, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We have that then set. That is the only other business, unless somebody has something else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Happy St. Patty's Day, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. There we have it. Green beer and ham.